Welcome, everybody. It is 7 o'clock on April 13th, Tuesday, April 13th. We are in a hybrid-type situation tonight. Three of us are at Lee Middle and High School in Room 119, and the rest of our committees are coming to you virtually from their home offices. We are, for those of you that are meeting virtually, we are meeting through Governor Baker's orders suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, GLC 30A Section 20. So, the meeting is taking place virtually over Zoom. Pursuant to MGLC 30A Section 20, I am hereby informing all attendees that a video and audio recording is being made of the meeting. And I would like to welcome everybody to stand with me and do the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, everybody. The mission statement for the Mission of Lee Public Schools is to ensure students have the opportunity to develop the social, civil, and critical thinking skills to thrive in an ever-changing world. Brenda, can I trouble you for a roll call, please?
Mr. Obin?
Here.
Mr. Daley?
Here.
Mr. Kenneth?
Here.
Mrs. Lucy?
Here.
Mrs. Wadmore? Mrs. Westcott?
Here.
And Ms. Larmen?
Here. Okay, our first order of business is to approve a long list of meeting minutes. So, the first meeting minutes that we need to approve are the meeting minutes from March 9, 2021. So, I will entertain a motion to approve the meeting minutes for March 9, 2021.
I make a motion to approve the minutes for March 9, 2021.
Any discussion? Brenda, can you roll call us, please?
Mr. Obin?
Yes.
Mr. Daley?
Yes.
Mr. Kenneth?
Yes.
Mrs. Lucy?
Yes.
Mrs. Westcott?
Yes.
Ms. Larmen?
Yes. All right, next, we need to approve the minutes for March 29, 2021. So, I will entertain a motion for approval of the March 29, 2021 minutes.
I make a motion we approve the minute meetings for March 29, 2021.
I second it.
Any discussion? Brenda, can you roll call us, please?
Mr. Obin?
Yes.
Mr. Daley?
Yes.
Mr. Kenneth?
Yes.
Mrs. Lucy?
Yes.
Mrs. Westcott?
Yes.
Ms. Larmen?
Yes. And lastly, we need to approve the minutes for April 5, 2021. So, I will entertain a motion for approval of the minutes of April 5, 2021.
I make a motion to accept April 5, 2021 meeting.
Can Nelson make that motion if he wasn't at the meeting? Yes, just checking.
Take it back then. I take it back. I won't make that motion.
You don't want to make that motion? I'll make that motion then. All right, I make a motion we approve the minute meetings from April 5, 2021.
Second.
Any discussion? Last one, Brenda.
Ms. Obin?
Yes.
Mr. Daley?
Yes.
Mr. Kenneth?
Yes.
Mrs. Lucy?
Yes.
Mrs. Westcott?
Yes.
And Ms. Larmen?
Yes. Next up, we have public input with Randy Kenneth.
Well, thank you, Andrea. I appreciate that. Members of the public are invited to address the committee at this time. Issues raised will normally be referred to the administration or subcommittee of the school committee. Do we have anybody from the public willing to make a comment? Wait, I see somebody out there with one hand up. Kathy Hall!
Thank you. Lee Library, so many wonderful things happening there. Check them out at lee@cwmars.org. And the greener gateway cleanup is Saturday, April 24, 9 to 11. Rain day is Saturday, May 1. As far as the Lee Youth Commission, we're working with a consultant. Information will be presented at the Lee Select Board Meeting on April 20. And a huge congratulations to our athletic and academic teams. It's wonderful to see them either in person via CTSB or Channel 12. Go Wildcats! Great job. Thank you.
Thanks, Kathy.
Anybody else with public comments? I don't see any.
All right.
All right.
I see Asa Stone in the audience. Asa, do you have a student representative report for us?
Hi, everybody. For those of you who don't know me, I'm Asa Stone. I'm a senior at Lee Middle and High School. And I have a very quick report for you. Obviously, we're all getting very excited to go back full in person, and I just want to say thank you to all the administration and the community and our teachers for supporting us in that. We were able to get picnic tables together for the outdoor seating at the cafeteria, which is really great because it means that we can have safer eating outside when we do get more people in the building. And other than that, the seniors are preparing for end-of-year activities and hoping to do a hybrid class night and also graduation. We're also very excited that there's going to be a prom-like event at the school. So, I think that's all, and happy break next week.
Thanks so much, Asa. I appreciate it. Okay, next up is me, the chair report. So, the first thing that I would like to do is a member recognition. I would like to let the community know that Anna Westcott is resigning from the school committee effective May 1. And I would like to personally and professionally thank her. I would like to personally thank her for her years of teaching service. My son was blessed to have her as a math teacher. I would also like to professionally thank her as a work colleague when I was working in the district. It was a pleasure to work with her. And then I would also like to thank her as a community member for her years of service to Lee Public Schools, both as a teacher and as a member of the Lee School Committee. Anna, you have been an invaluable asset to the Lee Public Schools for many, many years, and we really and truly appreciate your service. And we will be sorry to not see your smiling face on the other side of the video camera or across the table anymore. And we wish you nothing but the very, very best in your retirement from the school committee. So, thank you very much, Anna.
Thank you.
Next one. The next thing I wanted to let you guys know is that I... Two things. One, we had talked about setting up some dates for the Smart Goals meeting. I'd like to set those up in June. I'm going to send out some Saturday dates to you guys. I'm going to ask you all, those of you that are still on the committee, obviously Nelson, you're not going to write back because you will not be with us in June. You're done after your May meeting. I'm going to ask you guys to write back to me and let me know which dates work for you. The other thing is that I did contact MASC about having a training just for our committee about parliamentary procedures and budgetary components. And they are more than happy to provide us with those. And they said they could probably do both of them in a one-day session, half-a-day parliamentary procedures, half-a-day budgetary stuff, and that we could do those probably just bang it out on a Saturday. What I'd like to do is do the Smart Goals first, then do that. But I will send out the dates for that as well. But Glenn Kucher said that he would be more than happy to get those things set up for us. So, we should be good to go with those two things. I'm not going to sucker punch you with a question of the month this time because I had the other stuff that I wanted to talk about, and I'd like to keep us rolling. So, the next thing on our agenda is superintendent's report. So, Mike Rishard, you are up.
All right. Those of you who had that quick break in the action, appreciate everyone being with us tonight. Enrollment update. As of March, or excuse me, April 1, we're up one student. We had one transfer out and two move in. So, that pattern has been pretty consistent this year, and it's kind of a standard trend for us. We see a little bit of an ebb and flow each month, some comings and goings. We hope it continues to trend upwards, though. Personnel update, we hired a new paraprofessional for LES. Her name is Jennifer Dunn. And we also rounded out our custodial shift coverage now with the hiring of Joshua Stewart, who is filling the second shift custodial position at LES. So, we've got a full complement of custodians now. And they're doing a great job, by the way. COVID-19 update, I don't have the traditional update for you because the state did not provide the same metrics that they have been doing for the last number of months. So, I didn't have town-by-town information. By way of Jim Willis at Trytown, he's indicated we had 25 cases in the last two weeks in the town of Lee. But the great news is that vaccination rates among staff are excellent. So, thank you to all of our staff who have gone out to get their vaccinations, either through those things that have been scheduled through the county or on their own. They're taking health and safety and wellness as a priority, making sure they're taking care of themselves and the students. Pool testing update, consent forms still continue to be available online. Students and staff can jump in at any time. The state has announced that they will be funding pool testing efforts through the summer of 2021. So, through the end of August, pool testing will be available and funded by the state. Currently, we have 342 student consent forms and 68 staff consent forms on file. All samples that were collected on Monday of this week, that was yesterday, were negative. We'll get the results from today's collection tomorrow. And a huge thank you to County Ambulance for their continued collaboration in helping us to collect those samples Mondays and Tuesdays each week, which will switch to just Mondays following April vacation. A quick strategic plan update. The team has met as a whole two times, including last night. There's been some great work done to pare down and try to nail down some core values that reflect the schools and the community. And we're leveraging the Lee Public Schools' mission statement to support that work. The next steps of that group will be to conduct a district-wide needs assessment. And then some committees have been assigned around curriculum instruction, technology, and student programming, or programming development, rather. So, those committees will be working on an ongoing basis. Our next meeting is scheduled for May 3. Mr. Meyer is not able to be with us tonight. So, if it's okay, Chair Lammer quickly provide the facilities update on his behalf. Again, I mentioned earlier, we have a full complement of staff. The tractor that we ordered is expected to be delivered in late May or early June. That's great news for our custodial staff. The storage containers that we secured in order to empty out LES in some parts of LMHS are on-site and are full. You know, not to use a pun here, but the heat is off, and that's only in terms of the conducting of heat that's going through our buildings. So, we've switched over, turned the heat off, and hopefully Mother Nature continues to cooperate. And we've had a couple of new maple trees planted in the front of LMHS. For those of you who are coming to the school on a daily basis, you'll see those out in full. And I imagine that they're going to look fantastic when they grow in full scale. Great.
Thank you so much. All right, moving on to our principals and directors reports. First up, Kate Russell from Lee Elementary School.
Hi, everybody. So, we had what I would say is a successful re-entry of all students. We are using the cafeteria during lunchtime for two groups. We have ordered tables. Jordan reported yesterday that they should be here later this week and assembled and placed over the break. So, we should have two outdoor places available for kiddos to eat. And we have four people, four paraprofessionals, but actually three positions. Two of those people are going to share a full week's worth of work. So, we'll have some extra people to man those areas outside of the cafeteria in the alcove and on the walkway that is behind the PE. Let's see, we are going to have our second kindergarten parent workshop tomorrow. We're doing it differently. We're running it as a webinar and sending out the link just to those parents who have provided us with email so that we don't have unwanted visitors. So, that'll be tomorrow night. There is still time for anyone who's on this call from the public. There's still time to call the office tomorrow and get your email information, and we'll get out an invite for you to come to that webinar. Other than that, since we're now open, we can start planning for the MCAS. I just signed up for a webinar about just how the remote testing is going to work. So, that'll be interesting. That's for after-break. And of course, we're moving on to summer planning to get as many kiddos back as we possibly can. So, that's about it from LES.
Thanks, Kate. Okay, next up, Greg Brigenti from Lee Middle and High School.
Good evening, everyone. I'll be quick tonight as well, just a few things to mention. As Asa did say, we are beginning our plannings, or at least the planning is well underway for end-of-year events. We are going to have, hopefully, a prom-like activity that the junior class is putting on. That would be on Thursday, May 21 is our target date because it's outside, obviously. That might change depending upon the weather. It's going to look a little like a prom, but not really be a full-fledged prom. It will be outside. The plan is in the football field. There will still be a walk-in so that people can... The students can get all dressed up and be walked in. We're not quite sure about an audience for that part yet. But there will be no dancing. So, it'll be a formal seated dinner outside with social distancing going into effect, catered dinner, and some special dessert brought in. And it should be a good evening. And certainly, while it won't be the full experience of a prom, it'll be as close as we can get during this time. We are planning on having class night on Thursday, June 3. As Asa mentioned, that will be a hybrid experience. Our plan is to have the members of the senior class and some faculty who might wish to attend in person in the audience of the auditorium. And we would broadcast that live on CTSB and the internet so that families and friends could tune in from home and watch the class night ceremony. So, again, a step better than what we were able to provide last year, one step closer to a normal class night. And I think it would be a great experience to be able to get the class together in one location for class night in person. And then as graduation, which is tentatively scheduled for Friday, I'm sorry, Saturday, June 5, time yet to be determined. It'll be, once again, on the school grounds, back on the football field. We're still finalizing the number of guests, but we hope to maximize that to what the state allows and have a great outdoor ceremony again for graduation. We are ready to begin fully in-person learning at LMHS on the Monday after-break on April 26, doing the final preparations now. Furniture moves are actually beginning tomorrow afternoon to get some of those desks off the auditorium stage and back into classrooms. And, you know, it's adding some more desks to the cafeteria as well to accommodate. The only major change structurally we had to do was add a additional lunch. So, it will now be four lunches so that we can spread out those numbers safely because you still have six feet of spacing for lunches. So, some kids will be having lunch a little earlier than they're used to and some a little later, but we'll all adjust, and it'll be a good thing. So, other than that, everything is going well. And, you know, thank you and have a great night.
Thanks, Greg. All right, and special education with Jen Norton.
Hi, everyone. We have a few things going on for special education. I'm going to give you some updates, and then some more information will be coming in the next month or so. Our four-year-old preschool students are going to be back to school five days a week for two and a half hours. Their schedule is going to be 11:30 to 2:00. We've done that so that we can take into account the pickups and drop-offs. So, we're kind of in and out of there before any of the other buses or parents are, and it's been working really well. So, we have the special education students five days after vacation. And then we are going to be opening up some slots for some peers to enter the program. That will be May 3. We're not sure exactly how many slots we'll have yet, but we do have people's name on waiting lists. But if there's anybody out there who's interested, please contact my office and get your name on the list, and we will start sending out letters probably right after we come back from vacation and talking to those families and offering up some spots to people. We're looking at a different model for preschool for next year, where the four-year-old program will stay the same. It'll be two and a half hours for five days a week. And we're playing with the three-year-old program a little bit. We've had some really wonderful success come out of this COVID. As mad as the madness aside, we've actually been able to really work together and have some really terrific progress in some of our really young students with some very diverse needs. So, we will be bringing more about that, and I will probably invite the preschool teacher with me. When we do that, I'm hoping to do that in May for you. So, we'll give you more information. The three-year-olds right now are going to be continuing to get their individual services based on special education need and those students who have IEPs. And we will hopefully be back to more programming for next school year. Our preschool screenings are actually this week. They're Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday of this week for three- and four-year-olds. If your child turns three or four by October 1 of 2021, please give us a call, and we will get you on our screening list. If we can't fit you in this week, we will definitely make an appointment with you as soon as possible to get your child screened. Even if they do not attend Lee Public Schools, it's very important to know you are more than welcome, and we encourage you to partake in our screening process. Again, you can call my office for an appointment for that. Letters for special education programming, special education summer programming is June 28 to July 29. And letters for those families will be going out when we come back from vacation, as well as the job postings for summer. Those will also be going up when we come back from vacation. And we will also be having some postings, some anticipated postings for some paraprofessional positions for next year with people who have put in their intent to retire after the end of this year. Right now, we believe we have three, but that they still have time to change their minds. So, and we are right now, Greg and Kate and myself and Mike, we've been working on the tiered focus monitoring. We are meeting with Desi on Thursday. We've met with them several times virtually. They're actually going to be onsite on Thursday. It's a very small process, more than it used to be. They used to interview like seven or eight different people and parents. And they did send out a parent survey. They are interviewing one of the team members. They're interviewing another set of parents aside from the people that they surveyed. And then they'll be doing an exit interview with the administrative team. The findings, if any, you'll get a report, which we will share, obviously, with the school committee. We don't anticipate that there will be any findings, but we will let you know if there are. They've been really great. I have to say the process is improved so much, which Andrea will understand what I'm talking about. So, we have some opportunity to ask questions and get guidance and say, hey, does this work? So, it's definitely a bit different, and it's much pared down from what it normally is. So, we will be doing that. And I would imagine the final reports will come out sometime in June. But I'll give you verification of that after we meet with them on Thursday. That's all I have.
Thanks, Jen. That is another thing I do not miss. All right, so the next thing up on our agenda is our committee reports. And so, let's hear from our finance committee.
All right. So, earlier this evening, we had an efficient finance subcommittee meeting where we approved two warrants. And the first warrant is the account payables warrant for $152,941.96.
Okay, I will accept a motion to accept the accounts payable warrant for $152,941.96.
I make a motion we accept the accounts payable warrants for $152,941.96.
Thank you.
Any discussion? Oh, sorry. How did the committee vote?
I'm sorry. I apologize. The subcommittee unanimously approved the motion as well.
Any other discussion? Okay. Brenda, can you do a roll call?
Mr. Obin? Mr. Obin?
Yes.
Mr. Daley?
Yes.
Mr. Kenneth?
Yes.
Mrs. Lucy?
Yes.
Mrs. Westcott?
Yes.
Ms. Larmen?
Yes.
All right, Randy, how about the next one?
All right, so the second warrant is the payroll, and the finance subcommittee unanimously approved the amount of $556,310.86.
Hey, I will make a motion to accept the payroll warrant for $556,310.86.
A second.
Any discussion? Brenda, can you roll call?
I'm sorry, who made the motion? And you said so moved? Thank you.
I figured we had already said that figure enough.
Mr. Obin?
Yes.
Mr. Daley?
Yes.
Mr. Kenneth?
Yes.
Mrs. Lucy?
Yes.
Mrs. Westcott?
Yes.
Ms. Larmen?
Yes.
Okay, next up, we have Esser and CBPF.
Chair Larmen, all right, I'll give you an update here. So, very quickly, the Esser funding that originally came in around $70,000 has been spent down to approximately $16,000 remaining. And the coronavirus prevention funds, which comes in two installments, just over $18,000, each one in March and another one in May, are being dedicated to purchasing those picnic tables that Principal Retzel and Principal Brigenti referenced. We'll have 12 tables at each building. We also use those for the storage units for furniture and equipment at LES and LMHS, as well as paying the stipend. as well as paying the stipends for the lunch monitors that will assist with the LES returned to full in person. So a detailed accounting of those purchases will be made available to the committee in the coming weeks. So that's that's the quick update. There's lots more grant funding. I'll forward to the committee some information that's coming our way relative to what we expect to be ESER 3, which, as I mentioned to the committee before, is going to be a 2.2 multiplier of ESER 2. So we're talking about $340,000 or so in ESER 2 and just over $700,000 in what will be ESER 3.
All right, thanks. Okay, moving right along to last month, we had tabled the discussion about the Union 29 Agreement and what we're going to do with regards to next steps to this month. So I'm asking y'all what you want to do with it. Do we want to have a discussion about it tonight? Do we want to table this till the summer when we don't have school reopening and COVID on our plate and all these other things? Do we want to create a subcommittee that's going to look into this?
Well, I'd like to suggest we don't make any moves on it today since Mrs. Wadsworth is absent, and she had a lot of ideas about it.
Okay.
Perhaps we should just table it again until she's present with us.
Okay. Yeah.
So we'll table it next month?
Well, I like the idea of even going out a little bit further when there's less going on, so I like your idea of taking a look at it during the summertime.
Okay. So would anybody like to make a motion to table it till the summer? So like the June or July meeting?
I I'll make a motion that we table the Union 2029 Agreement until June of this year.
I'll second.
Any discussion? Brenda, can you take a roll call?
I second it.
Christie seconded.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Mr. Daly?
Yes.
Mr. Kenneth?
Yes.
Mrs. Lucy?
Yes.
Mrs. Westcott?
Yes.
Ms. Larmen?
Yes. Okay, and then the next thing we need to do is approve the school year 2122 calendar. Mike did share it with us last month. Was it last month, or was it just at the?
Yeah.
We had two weeks ago. They're all starting to meld together.
We saw an earlier version and an updated version recently. Again, we've got a calendar populated with 180 school days as proposed to begin for teachers on August 23rd and 24th for professional development days. As I mentioned at a previous meeting, the LEA has agreed to that earlier start date, which is a deviation from their contract. They have agreed to that that start date. We've got a full professional development date scheduled for November 2nd, which was a request that was made by a committee member to make sure that we collaborated with other county schools, and we've complemented that with a half day in March to allow for some more personalized time for our Lee Public Schools' teachers. So the the last day of school in this calendar as proposed is actually as early as June 8th, barring any snow days. And as I've mentioned to the committee before, the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education has yet to commit to being able to have remote school days next year, so we're planning at this point for any any inclement weather days to be true snow days.
I will entertain a motion to
the school year 2122 school calendar.
I'll make a motion to approve the school calendar for year 21 to 22.
I second it.
Any discussion?
All right, Brenda, can you roll call us?
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Mr. Daly?
Yes.
Mr. Kenneth?
Yes.
This is Lucy?
Yes.
This is Westcott?
Yes.
Ms. Larmen?
Yes. Okay, next on our agenda is new business, and we have these choice openings for year 2122. Do you want to walk us through that?
Sure, so I shared with the committee an outline of the number of school choice that the school administration is proposing to make available. We're actually taking the projected enrollment for each class next year, and that's just the the seat numbers is the delta between the enrollment and then probably more figure that's in the teacher's contract. You'll see that there are seats available that will make, hopefully, the decision for some of our surrounding communities, parents to attend schools in Lee. Numbers again range from a high of 10 to a low of at the are pretty good. In the summer, it's a great opportunity for students to experience the Lee Public Schools at their full, upper and upper grade.
Can I ask a quick question? Just how do we promote that?
Like Yeah, it's a great question. So I think we spoke about a month ago, a month and a half ago, when I the paper, schools and communities are discussed. So we missed that window, but I think we can do some publication. We do have an advertising line item in our budget that I think we can promote, so social media and our friend here, as well as word of mouth, but we will we'll get some information out, perhaps if we can some some small-scale advertising in print media may also work in our favor.
Can I ask a question? What what's the deadline for applying for school choice?
One, I want to double check that, Mrs. Lucy, but I believe that's that's the policy that was approved perhaps a year ago. And we need to report to the state by the beginning of June about whether we're participating in school choice, which my expectation is based on tonight's vote, we will be doing that.
I would just, I would just like to just take it a little bit further, but just being on a strategic strategic planning committee, there are some parents on there that do not live in Lee and they're school choice, and I think they could give really good testimonials and a and a social media platform, so
That's next.
Food for thought. You do.
All right, so I will entertain a motion to approve the 2122 LPS proposed school choice openings.
I'll make a motion to approve the 2122 Lee Public Schools' proposed school choice openings.
I'll second it.
Any discussion?
Would it be helpful, Chair Larmour, if I just, for the purpose of the record, read through the number of seats at each grade level, just so that folks at home may know that?
That would be great.
Okay, so kindergarten, 10 seats, grade one, four seats, grade two, four seats, grade three, three seats, grade four, two seats, grade five, three seats, grade six, two seats, grade seven, one seat, grade eight, zero, grade nine, one, grade 10, three, grade 11, zero, grade 12, two. Excuse me, I apologize. Those are inquiries. I
I was gonna say, those are not the numbers that are on the form you gave us.
I was rifling through that. That's the number of inquiries. The proposed seat openings, wow, I should have been looking a little bit closer. They are, as follows, kindergarten, 14, grade one, 17, grade two, 10, grade three, six, grade four, seven, grade five, 13, grade six, 10, grade seven, five, grade eight, 19, grade nine, seven, grade 10, six, grade 11, two, and grade 12, six. My apologies to the committee and to the folks at home.
Can we put it on our website?
Yes, it will be.
Okay, perfect.
Can I ask one more question? Sorry. So the those are those numbers that you just went over, does that include kids that are a school choice in this year?
No. Student is accepted in school choice, they are entitled to that school choice law.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other discussion? All right, now we can roll call, Brenda. Is this the penalty already?
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Mr. Daly?
Yes.
Mr. Kenneth?
Yes.
Mrs. Lucy?
Yes.
Mrs. Westcott?
Yes.
Ms. Larmen?
Yes. Okay. Oh, goodness, we're at the end of our agenda. I know, look at that. All right, so future business, our next meeting will be May 11th, which will be Nelson's last meeting with us, so everybody should show up so they can say goodbye. I hope that everybody that is sitting here with me today will show up in May so we can be in person. Any of you that didn't show up, I would love it for you guys to show up in May if you would. Anna, I want to thank you once again for your service to the school committee, so hopefully on May 11th, you're sitting somewhere nice with a cocktail. And I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
I think Anna should do this one.
Thanks. Okay, I make motion that we close this meeting.
I second.
Any discussion? All right, let's take a roll call, Brenda.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Mr. Daly?
Yes.
Mr. Kenneth?
Yes.
Mrs. Lucy?
Yes.
Mrs. Westcott?
Yes.
Ms. Larmen?
Yes.
Okay, it is 7:42.